The Town of Cary's Government Access Channel.
Call to order the January 15th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Robinson for our ceremonial opening. Ms. Robbins.
Great, thank you so much. Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt our agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And Mrs. Jimmy Burns Butts will present the Aging Issues Task Force report. Ms. Butts, welcome.
Good evening, Council. We, the members of the Aging Issues Task Force, want to say thank you to the Cary Town Council for giving us the opportunity to serve. Our objective was to assess the town's level of age-friendliness. Our guide was the TJ Cog Toolkit, resulting in our recommendations to Town Council to support an aging population. We want to thank Mary Warren with TJ Cog for her presentation on the Toolkit and partnering with the town on this pilot effort and allowing us the opportunity to give feedback on this Toolkit. And lastly, we want to thank all of the Town of Cary staff, from planning, parks, police, fire, transportation, and facilities, Town Manager's Office, Town Clerk's Office, legal and public information, for helping us in this endeavor and giving us presentations on all the areas of service for aging adults and on aging issues. I would like to introduce the members of this committee who are present. If you would stand, please. Harold Steerhoff, Vice Chair, Jared Kratzler, and Martha Dickerson. Thank you for being here. Town Councilmember also and liaison, Ed Yurha, if you'd recognize him. At this time, I also want to recognize Russ Overton and Virginia Johnson. We could not have done this without their help. Cary is a great place to live, many opportunities for living healthy and meaningful lives. Our population has a small percentage of senior citizens, 8.7 percent, aged 65 and older in Cary. Each of you has a copy of our final report and the recommendations that each committee member contributed to in each of the three specific mission areas. They are: review and provide feedback to TJ Cog about their draft Toolkit; provide a summary of the Toolkit assessment results for the Town of Cary; and provide input and feedback into the Town of Cary's Imagine Cary effort. I trust that each of you will read all of our recommendations carefully. Overall, the town ranked highly using the TJ Cog Toolkit, receiving an overall average score of 2.54 out of a three-point scale, indicating an overall substantial investment, the highest investment rating in each of the seven overall assessment categories, which included housing, transportation, safety, health care, supportive services, general retail and services, and social integration. A detailed summary of the ratings results for each category is included in Appendix A of our final report. Now I will share with you some more specific recommendations from our discussions of the Toolkit. The availability of affordable and appropriate housing for seniors; a way to inform seniors about the HUD Housing Program and Wake County's Tax Relief Program; additional registration sites for C-Trans and additional routes, including service to the airport; walkability and pedestrian-related safety concerns; incentives to build affordable health care centers. The most important theme from all of these issues was that there is a critical need to improve communications and delivery of information about the many opportunities available to all of our citizens. For example, it is imperative to reach not just the individual seniors and disabled, but the family members, friends, all categories of caregivers, and the general public. Effective communication is critical. Our suggestions are an effort to start a new conversation about what services and assistance programs, including volunteer opportunities, for all citizens. In conclusion, each of us offers our appreciation to the Town of Cary for all of the good opportunities that now exist. We applaud the success of Cary's growth and opportunities for everyone. Cary is a great place to live. When all is said and done, the most important part of our conclusion is communication. We've discussed many ways to get the word out, for many opportunities for seniors to be involved socially, receive help individually, and know where the resources are to enhance their/our lives. In my experience, I find that word of mouth is the best way to share information. You cannot sow seeds if the ground is not prepared. Usually, folks, seniors, do not pay attention unless it is relevant to individual needs or their interest. Perhaps it will be the children, friends, or neighbors who share that information one on one. The old phrase "each one tell one" is vital. To tell someone of any age anything, you must first get their attention. To engage our younger population, our children and neighbors, sharing information to seniors can make an impact. The senior population will be doubled over the next 25 years. Many, or perhaps most, seniors today do not use the Internet. That will change. Most, or even all, of our children and grandchildren will know so much more than we do, and perhaps they will be finding options for their parents, or their grandparents, or their senior neighbors. Can you imagine that? Thanks again for creating the Aging Issues Task Force and for giving our group the opportunity to provide you with our feedback, so that you can continue to review where to focus your efforts on our growing population. In the words of Mahatma Gandhi, "The future depends on what you do today." Our thanks to the Cary Town Council for forward-thinking. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Yurha, being liaison, I would invite you to present comments if you have them.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I would just want to say what a pleasure it's been to work with these folks on the task force. The four who are here tonight, and there was also three other folks, Kay Strufalino, Ellie Tomlinson, and Doc Thorne, to make up our task force. I hope they all stay engaged in not only aging issues, but in all matters concerning Cary. And I have a feeling, knowing these folks, they sure will. I want to thank all of you for allowing me to be the liaison to the group, and especially Mrs. Robinson with her work with Triangle J, who alerted us to the opportunity that we could be a pilot community for this Toolkit. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay.
I hope Triangle J is going to be happy with the work that's done. I really think they will. The analysis and the comments are extensive. I don't expect you all to go through all those appendices and charts and numbers and stuff. There's a lot of stuff there for Triangle J to digest. I think it will be truly helpful. For us, I think it's good to know that we're doing pretty well in this area right now, in the area of aging services, as our chair indicated. We scored very high on the scorecard itself, as presented by Triangle J. One other takeaway, though, that I think needs to be mentioned is, toward the end of the staff report, you'll see that the task force observed, and I'm trying to read this here, as Cary's population profile gets older, the town needs to create an institutional framework, so that policy keeps up with the challenges associated with older population. An institutional framework. Now, I can take many forms. They mention a few possibilities in here. I truly would like to encourage the staff to look into this and see if there are other forms even that this institutional framework could take as we move forward. We may be ahead of the curve right now, or on the curve, but we go to sleep for a little bit with the way these numbers are projected. Our booming aging population is going to be truly booming, and we need to stay ahead of that curve. I'm prepared to make a motion, but I'll hold off if there are other folks who would like to make some comments.
The only comment I wanted to make, and I've been preparing the State of the Town address, so I have a bunch of facts and figures running around. You were talking about that booming population. 5,000 of us turn 65 every year in Cary, so that's a lot. We're getting old very fast, so that's interesting. You're talking about the booming population, so this is very important to our town and very important to our region. So the work you've done is invaluable. Other comments?
Well, I'd just say that the wonderful thing about the Triangle J Council of Government is that it intends to use collaboration among local governments, so that we're not all reinventing the wheel. And I really appreciate the citizens who have taken time to test out this Toolkit and make recommendations, and I can envision that other communities will look at the findings that we have from our community and say, "We have similar findings," and look to us to say, "How are you trying to address this?" And I can see further collaboration going forward. So I'm very excited about the fact that you guys did this and the work that you've done is excellent. Thank you.
The staff recommendation has three items to it, so I'd like to move that we accept the task force report as submitted by the Aging Issues Task Force, dated December 16, 2014. Number two, I'd like to add a little bit to this number two, by the way. Number two is to provide input to the staff that, well, let's start again with number two, that we direct the staff to review the findings and initiatives that the council may want to consider in the future, and, this is the part I'd like to add, and to direct the staff to develop and consider additional ways to enhance the quality of life for our seniors, in addition to those recommended here in the report, if they come up with something additional. And thirdly, to direct the staff to forward the task force feedback on the livability self-assessment for municipalities' Toolkit to the Triangle J Council of Governments, which would complete the town's pilot initiative at Triangle J.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Further discussion.
I just have one more thing to add, not as an amendment to your motion, but one of the line items that was called out was to increase communications to the seniors with respect to the organizations and facilities, and I hope that staff will look at leveraging the ISAB, since they focus a lot on communications as well as using technology to improve that. I know that is, I did forward the results of this and the report to the ISAB, and they have put it on their next agenda to discuss it, so just an add-on is a possible way to reduce staff time and leverage our volunteers in the community.
Great, very good.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Butts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yurha, and thank you to the committee and task force for all that you did. Thank you. We now move to Agenda Item 2.2. With Mrs. Adcock's resignation from the council to serve as our state representative, we need to elect a mayor pro temp. I do know that Ms. Bush is asked to be recognized at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we elect the esteemed councilmember Jack Smith as our mayor pro temp.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, please.
I would just like to comment that I think everybody sitting here at this table could serve admirably in that role. And that, you know, I, Jack is probably the longest-serving, wisest Cary councilmember that we've ever had in this town, and I just think it's a perfect fit for him, so.
And he is filling the term, and the term expires at the end of this year, and we'll be doing this again later in the year, so we, I agree that I think he's a good fit for filling this term. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
We now move to Item 2.3, Appointments of Council Liaisons to Boards and Other Organizations that were previously assigned to Mrs. Adcock. The following appointments of council liaisons to boards and organizations are: Planning and Zoning Board, the liaison is now Councilmember Robinson; Cary-Morrisfield Joint Issues Committee, Councilmember Bush; Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition, Mr. Smith; Metropolitan Metro Mayor's Board of Directors, Mr. Smith; Triangle J Governments Regional Mayors and County Chairs, Mr. Smith; Campo Executive Board Alternate, Mr. Smith; Triangle Mobility Action Partnership, Mr. Smith. You're going to be busy. Triangle J Council of Government Center of Regional Enterprise, updated by moving Mr. Smith, since he's going to be busy with other things. As primary, we're going to put Mr. Yurha, and as the alternate, we're going to put Mrs. Bush. And those are the appointments. So now we move to Item Number Three, which is Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda item, Public Speaks Out, has included instructions for the speaking forum printed on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers will have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing. We're going to enforce the three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the speaker's podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when time expires, the yellow light turns into a red light, and at that point, I will interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair, and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. And I think all of our speakers in advance were adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that if you're speaking for a group, that you have one spokesperson to speak on behalf of everyone, to reduce repetitive comments, and there is a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out, so that would also help in that respect as well. This is a business meeting. We ask that you please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite the first speaker to the podium to approach the podium to the aisle to my right.
Mayor and Town Council, thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Skip Hill. I'm the vice president and division head for a company called Highwoods Properties, which is an office real estate developer. We've been developing office buildings in Cary for almost 20 years now, and I've enjoyed a really, really good relationship with the town. Most of the developments that we have are in the northern part of the town, in a development called Weston. One of the trends we're seeing across the country, I'm one of 10 division heads across the country, and I head up the Cary, Raleigh, and Durham Division. Again, one of the divisions, I mean, one of the trends we're seeing across the country is a live-work-play area for office development, and we're very, very acutely sensitive to the fact that a relevant office development needs to have all kinds of live-work-play environments within it. And we've tried to do that with the Weston Development. We are the declarant for the overall Weston Development, although we don't own all of the properties there. Tonight, one of the cases you'll be considering is a rezoning from an office use to a multifamily use. It's something to be taken very seriously in the Town of Cary. I've also been on the Cary Chamber Board and worked as the economic developer, and very sensitive to the fact that Cary needs to be sensitive to the amount of office development land that it has in its future. Now, the point I want to make is, our company is a office developer, and yet we're coming to have a site rezoned from office to residential. We didn't take that lightly. And the reason we're doing that is because of the live-work-play relevance and environment that's inherent in developments throughout the country. We're going to, we have a site that will be right across the street from the MetLife buildings that we are developing and will own, which will house about 1,300 to 1,500 MetLife employees, and hopefully, if they expand, up to 2,000 in the future. We also have a development that's beside the site that we're looking to rezone, that houses currently about 400,000 square feet, and we have designs on a building to have another building. Deutsche Bank Globe was a part of that development. They have, at the end of this year, they'll have almost 800 employees. This particular site will be within walking distance of each of these office developments, and that's a critical component. Live-work-play these days also really needs to have a walkability factor in the live-work-play for the new millennials that are coming through. They like to be right there. They like to have the trails, the biking, the retail, close by. We've just spent, invested a good bit of money in center grain to develop a cafeteria and a freestanding fitness center for our customers there. So I wanted to thank you for your consideration tonight, and I hope you have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group. I'm here on behalf of K. Hobnany &amp; Homes, related to Items 6.6 and 6.7 on you all's discussion agenda. Those are the Indian Wells Road properties that have been acted on by the Planning and Zoning Board, or recommended for approval for the rezoning and the comprehensive plan consistency statement. I'm going to be very brief in my comments, and if during you all's discussion, if you have questions, we're here to answer those questions. I just want to, for the benefit of the council, have you all understand, the property subject to that rezoning is already zoned R8 conditional use, and one of those conditions is capping density on that property at 2.75 units per acre. That exists today, and that exists tomorrow, regardless of the decision that you all make with respect to that particular zoning. So no decision that's made tonight by you all, if it is to approve, and we hope it is, it's not going to increase residential density that is permitted on those sites. It's submitted solely for the purpose of taking what they thought was going to be a perimeter buffer for the property and moving it to the ultimate property line that's going to be developed by that site. So I just wanted to make that point clear for you all's benefit, because I appreciate the sensitivity that you all have with school capacity issues in that corridor, and so you all understand, there's not going to be more houses created as a result of an approval of that case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm JW Sharon with IDS. I wanted to give you an update on the High House South case, since it's been months and months being in front of you. We've made of a lot of additional changes. I think that really programs this site to fit the area that it is. Mainly, we have worked with the Capitol Area Preservation to save the Balcom House. We not only will be saving it in its current location, we will be saving at least 2/3 of an acre surrounding that site to leave it in a natural setting, of which would be donated to the Capitol Area Preservation for future use. Also, in addition to that, we put a 30-foot perimeter buffer. We've changed the zoning from TR to R8. By doing that, we've put perimeter lot sizes at 11,000, which would have been more than double the original request. We've also, that guarantees a minimum 8,000 for interior lots. But most important, too, we've changed now to a maximum of total of 30 units on 16.4 acres. We do believe that this request is the least impacted that site, if the site is to develop with any current conditions around it, and I can't say enough about the adjacent property on us throughout this process, because they have supported it from the very beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out. And we now move to our fourth item, which is the Consent Agenda. With the benefit of those people watching on our meeting on TV, I'll take a moment to review our consent agenda items. One vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have Minutes, Tax Report, Ratification of Resolution, Canterbury Downs, PR/CR Tournament Rental Fee Changes for Thomas Brooks and Middle Creek Weekend Rentals, Honor Initiated Annexation Petition 14A15 Purse Property, the following rezoning requests and their accompanying comprehensive plan consistency statement: 14 REZ22 Weston PDD Amendment, 14 REZ25 Creech Property, 14 REZ26 Hannah Property, 14 REZ31 Cary PDD Amendment Waterford Two, 14 REZ34 Pittard Farm Property. I have received a request from Mr. France to move Items 4.6 and 4.7, which is the rezoning 14 REZ22 and its accompanying comprehensive plan consistency statement, for the Weston PDD Amendment for discussion. Would councilmembers like any of the other items pulled for discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now go to public hearings. The same rules for public hearings, same rules that apply to Public Speaks Out apply to public hearings with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes instead of three minutes. For our first public hearing, I think it's our only public hearing, it is, is the public hearing consideration of resolution recommending approval of tax-exempt bonds for the financing of Triangle Math and Science Academy. We're going to hear first from our staff, then we're going to allow the applicant to explain the request. We're going to conduct a public hearing, and council may take action this evening. Introducing this item for staff is Ms. Mills.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. The Public Finance Agency is a political subdivision of the state of Wisconsin, and they are proposing to issue up to $25 million in bonds, of which $12,500,000 would ultimately benefit the Triangle Math and Science Academy in Cary, an operational 600-student K-8 charter school. Cary is the elected local governing body where the project is proposed, and the local governing body must approve the authority's financing following a public hearing process. It appears that the authority structures the financing so that the town that would complete the public hearing and the approval process has no liability for the repayment of any debt service on the bonds. On December 11, 2014, council voted to hold the public hearing and consider the resolution approving the bond transaction. The final proposed resolution finds that the $25 million in educational revenue bonds do not constitute a debt of the town, nor require a tax levy or pledge of the faith and credit of the town, nor will affect the town's debt ratios or legal debt limit, and that the town has made no financial analysis of the bonds, or of the borrower, or the project, and that the town approves solely for purposes of meeting the requirements and that the town approves solely for purposes of meeting the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, the issuance of not to exceed $25 million in education revenue bonds to be issued by the Public Finance Authority for the benefit of triad educational services. In addition for your information, the borrower offered to indemnify the town in regards to the council action to hold the public hearing and to consider the resolution, and the language of that indemnification has been agreed upon between the town attorney and the borrower. And this is the time to hear from Mr. Baron and hold the public hearing.
Okay. This time, I'd invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of Triangle Math and Science Academy. The proposed borrowers associated with this bond issuance, as you recall, we were here last month discussing this issue, and you all were determining whether you wanted to conduct a public hearing on this item, and we greatly appreciate you doing so. You're gonna hear momentarily from Mike Millier, who is bond counsel on behalf of the, the borrower, who can explain a little bit more of the details associated with the way that Tefra works. He understands it a heck of a lot better than I do. He's got a much bigger brain than I do. You'll also hear from the principal of the school, as well as several family members and some faculty at the school to hear a little bit more about what Triangle Math and Science Academy has been doing since they opened their doors. Briefly, and, and I think the discussion associated with what we're here for was, was well-covered, I want to hit on four primary items as part of my presentation. The first being that this isn't a referendum on charter schools. That, that ship has sailed, for lack of a better way to put it. This is a chartered school. It's on the ground. They're currently operating. We went through a special use permit process that was approved by the town back in the spring of 2013, and the school was very straightforward. We were very upfront with the nature of the use that was being proposed at that location and the fact that it was a charter school. We didn't hide that from anybody associated with the process, and again, it was a very, it was a public process. There's, it was a special use permit process. So, th, this is not a referendum on the issue, or the approval of charter schools, or whether charter schools are a good idea. For better or worse, you know, whether you all choose to approve the issuance of these bonds or not approve the issuance of these bonds, the charter school will continue to operate. And make no mistake, this is a, a big priority for them, and I'll explain why this is a big priority for them, but they're gonna continue operating at this location as a charter school. The reason why it's important to them is it's roughly a $7.2 million savings to the school. The school is a nonprofit, public charter school, and that by the issuance of these bonds, as, as opposed to having to go through traditional financing mechanisms, they're gonna save seven to, 7.2 million dollars. That's 7.2 million dollars that can be used on facilities, facilities that they don't get the benefit of bond issuance when Wake County public schools decide, when, when the Wake County, when, when Wake County decides to issue bonds to construct schools, schools like Triangle Math and Science Academy don't get to participate in the funds that are generated from those bonds. That's what, this is serving that purpose. So, it's 7.2 million dollars worth of savings that goes into facilities, that goes into to school offerings, that goes into teacher play, pay, you name it. It, it, it's 7.2 million dollars and 7.2 million reasons why this is going to be a better school in the town of Cary. And again, it's a nonprofit. This isn't 7.2 million dollars that's gonna be going and lining anybody's pockets. It's going to make a better school. From my perspective, and it's just my perspective, the decision that you all are making tonight has less to do with, is charter, is a charter school the right thing or a wrong thing to do? It's avoiding economic waste. And again, it's just my perspective, but my perspective is, a decision tonight to say no is encouraging economic waste by making them spend, by, by making the citizens of Cary, who want to have their kids go to that school, have to spend more money to make it a better facility, to make it, make it a better school. The second point I want to raise is with respect to liability, and the staff hit, hit on that. The, the school is confident that the town will face no liability associated with approval of this resolution. In fact, we're so confident that they were willing to sign a, an indemnity, a full indemnity of the town for any possible claim, action, cost, expense, you name it. I, I've, I've constructed it as broadly as I possibly can. I shared it with the town's attorney and didn't receive any comments on the breadth of the indemnity. And I could tell you, if it's not broad enough, if, if, if Ms. Simpson believes that we need to beef that up, we can beef that up. They are that confident that there is no potential liability, and so they will sign the broadest possible indemnity they possible, possibly can, to assure the town that the town is not gonna face adverse consequences associated with the approval of the issuance of the bonds. Third, I understand there's some current concern about precedent-setting, and I get it. This is an unusual request. This isn't your typical run-through of public hearing process associated with a rezoning or a special use permit. This is outside of the box, and I completely understand that. I think this is the type of precedent that the town wants to set. Again, the nature of the Tefra process, and Mr. Millier, we'll talk about this in, in more educated detail, it's essentially a federal subsidy. It's available to any number of institutional nonprofits, hospitals, schools, churches. It's a, it's a mechanism that allows for bonds to be issued as opposed to private financing to occur. And while I know you guys don't want people lining up the door and knocking on the door and saying, "Hey, we want to do the same thing," but it's a financing mechanism that makes things happen that otherwise wouldn't be possible without this financing opportunity. So, I, again, it's my personal opinion, but I think it is the type of precedent that the town would want to set, especially as it relates to schools. And it's gonna make the town a more attractive place for people to live and people to work, because the schools will be stronger as a result of this decision. And finally, and I want to reiterate it, this is a nonprofit. It's a nonprofit entity. The decision that's made tonight is not going to be lining anybody's pockets. It's a school. It's a publicly chartered school, chartered by the state of North Carolina. They want to do good. You're gonna hear that from the, from the principal, you're gonna hear that from the families. They thoroughly enjoy being a part of the town of Cary. They thoroughly enjoy where they're operating. They want to be a part of the town. They want to be a long-term part of the town. So, those are the four points I want to make. We appreciate, we greatly appreciate you all's time and you all's attention. And I do want to reiterate, I, I, I understand it. I get why you all are concerned about making this decision, but I think once you get past the uniqueness of the request itself, it's, it's pretty easy to understand, and that is, do we want to save 7.2 million dollars in costs associated with public education? And I think the answer is yes. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to, I guess you'll open the public hearing, and our first speaker will be Mr. Millier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. This, now's the time for the public hearing for the approval of tax-exempt bonds, the resolution recommending the approval of tax-exempt bonds for the financing of Triangle Math and Science, and I'll invite the first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Mike Millier. I'm an attorney with the Ice Miller Law Firm in Columbus, Ohio, and as Jason said, I live the exciting life of a tax-exempt bond attorney. For this proposed bond transaction, I represent the investment banker or the underwriter of the bonds, which is BB&amp;T Capital Markets, which is probably a name that many of you are familiar with, because in addition to having a strong local presence, they're one of the, the few firms that actually are engaged in charter school financing on a nationwide basis. Because of my experience with tax-exempt bond financings, and specifically financings for charter schools, I was asked to, to make a brief presentation about the Tefra process and why the need for it. So, I just want to provide a little context. As Jason said, what's, what's at stake here is really a federal subsidy. With federalism concerns, the federal government wants to make sure that states and local governments can finance their activities without being taxed indirectly by the federal government. And I say indirectly because the beauty of tax-exempt bonds is, when the bonds are sold, the investors get interest payments, but they don't pay federal income tax on those interest earnings. As a result, they'll accept a lower rate of interest, which gets passed through to the borrowers. So, you know, if you're an investor and you're subject to tax, you may charge 7% interest, but after tax, it may only be 5% that you're getting. Well, if, if you're buying a tax-exempt bond, you'll say 5% is what I want, because that's what I, what I would have gotten after tax anyway. So, to the investor, it doesn't matter so much, because after tax, they're gonna have essentially the same rate. But if you're the borrower, what do you want to pay? A higher rate or the lower rate? It matters a lot. And as, as Jason said, the financial advisor for the borrower has quantified the impact to the school, you know, that differential, that spread between taxable rates and tax-exempt rates. The difference is roughly 240-some thousand dollars a year over an expected 30-year life of these bonds. So, that's where that number comes from in terms of, of the impact. So, the, the federal government, again, wants to provide this subsidy to states and local governments, but they've also extended that same benefit to other nonprofit organizations. Basically, any 501(c)(3) organization can use tax-exempt bonds to finance their capital projects. And the reason for that is, is to become a 501(c)(3), you either need to be doing something that, if you didn't do it, a government would have to do, or you're engaged in some type of charitable activity that the federal government wants to promote. So, again, as Jason said, although, you know, a Tefra hearing and a tax-exempt bond financing for a, a local nonprofit may be new to you, it's used throughout the country, not just for charter schools. Public schools obviously can use tax-exempt financing. Charter schools can use them, not because they're charter schools, but because they're 501(c)(3) organizations. So, you know, the same benefit, the same subsidy can be taken advantage of by any 501(c)(3). Private schools, faith-based schools, faith-based K-12 schools use tax-exempt bonds all the time. Hospitals, nursing homes, private colleges and universities, basically, if any nonprofit is using tax-exempt bonds, they've had to go through this Tefra process. So, there's been a public hearing, and there's been a local governmental entity that has approved the bonds. The federal government, in a nod again to state and local governments, has said, not only are we gonna provide this tax exemption, but we want to make sure that the local governments are okay with bonds being issued for the project. And so, back in the early 1980s, they put into the tax code this Tefra requirement. You've probably heard Tefra, and what does that mean? I think it's Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and it's a mouthful, so they say Tefra. And really, that's, that's just an opportunity for local governments to voice their approval or disapproval of bonds being issued for a project. They're not being asked to approve the project, they're not being asked to approve the borrower. What, what you're essentially saying, if you adopt this resolution, is, it's okay with us if the Public Finance Authority wants to issue bonds for this school. And again, there's no liability to the town of Cary, there's an indemnification agreement. The investors here are sophisticated investors. There's 12 to 15 institutional firms who buy these bonds. That's who these bonds will be sold to. Thank you.
Mr. Millier. Next speaker, please.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Keenan Gundodu. I'm an assistant professor at NC State University, and I'm also parents of two kids attending the charter school, Triangle Math and Science Academy. My daughter is at fifth grade, son is at second grade. I'm also the president of the board of directors of the school. So, here, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna try to just introduce our school to you a little bit. So, our school is open three years ago, in 2012. When we started it, it was only 250, 260 students. It was a K-6 school, and we are basically growing in size. Over the last two years, we added 200 students more. Now, we are 450 students in our school. It's K-6, eight right now. We didn't only grow in size, we are growing extremely well with our academic progress. As a result of that, we have actually a lot of people waiting in the list. So, over the last summer, we had about 1,200 students waiting in the list to, to basically, to, they were hoping to join our school, basically. So, let me tell you a little bit about our success. At average, when you compare the reading scores, the math scores of North Carolina, even Wake County, which is very successful compared to all North Carolina, our school is performing 30% or 40% higher than them. It's not only academics, extracurricular activities, we are very much better compared to any other school in the region. If you come out, come to our school, you will see on your left side in entrance, there are these trophies that are fitting to the shelves there. Over the last three years, we have 450 students, we earned, our students are awarded more than 100 medals in different competitions and trophies. So, those competitions are nationally, regionally, statewide, recognized competitions, such as American Math Contest, in which one of our students actually ranked first in the whole nation, and our team ranked as second in the whole nation, trimathlin, chess competitions, you name it. I mean, science olympics. Last year, one of our, 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 our science team actually sent a balloon to sky, which was actually big news in, in Cary. So, so, the school is a very successful school. I'm very proud to be actually part of this activity. What, what I would like to add is, it is, the reason that it's successful, it's because actually our, the way that, the, the, the way that we actually operate the school. It's a community-driven effort. The parents are highly involved in our school. So, in any day, any time, after school hours, Saturdays or Sundays, you would find a parent or a teacher working with our students, trying to mentor our kids in a, for a robotic, robotic competition. You would find students on the floors designing a motor, and they're coding highly sophisticated computer codes for controlling engines and motors to, to actually succeed in their, for instance, Lego League competition. So, I do, would like to, I would like to actually thank to those parents who are actually here to support us.
Please don't applaud. Please don't applaud.
No, no.
We would ask you to stand, but not applaud.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I also have some of our parents and, and staff members who would like to speak after me. So, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, the Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much. I am Gina Dean, and I have two kids at the Triangle Math and Science. Well, you know, there's not a book on parenting and how to get it right. I've had my children in all kind of school, private and all those other ones, and they didn't get it right. And I'm just so happy that I think I've got it right this time with Triangle Math and Science. Now, he talked about all that robotics, but let me tell you, they help all kids. They are compassionate. I email them all the time. They know all my emails, 'cause any time of night, they might see an email from me, and guess what? They respond. And they are working with the young people regardless. Now, you know, she's at the Math and Science. Now, I'm gonna make sure she knows how to change some money when you go to the grocery store. Have you ever gone to the store and given someone one cent and they couldn't change it? And they said, "Oh, don't give me that, because I don't have that in the computer," because they can't think. They not, everything is in the computer, but at Triangle Math and Science, they're gonna have to know how to change regardless of what they're given. And so, she may not get that balloon up into the sky, but she's gonna be a productive citizen in North Carolina, and we love Cary, and we want to make sure that the children, they're respected, they, the community service, and all that has to be. And I have a little one, too, third grade, so I'm going crazy. I got an elementary and a middle school, and we're just excited to go to high school, and we're gonna, I don't know about all that money y'all talking about, but one thing I am glad to know, that they are still teaching on tomorrow morning, regardless if they get it or they don't. We're gonna have good education in Cary. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council.
Move to your left just a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, hello. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Lana Kennybrew. I am, I'm currently a homemaker and electrical engineer by profession, but at this school, I'm a proud parent of a sixth grader and a third grader. I'm also an OM coach, an Audacity of the Mind coach for K-3 at the school, and so, I would like you to know that I'm here to support Triangle Math and Science, and I also want you to know that our children are learning the current technology that is used in industry today, as well as business tools. And I could truly say that, because I've been in the industry, automotive industry and various others, is also a business tools they're learning, and I'm helped teaching them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Jananne Cassar, and I have an interesting position here. I'm not only a parent, I'm a teacher. And I teach middle school language arts, and I have two daughters at the school, one eighth grade, and I got a fourth grader. And they like school as well as could And they like school as well as could be expected. They do pretty well. But what makes me happy as a parent is they are consistently challenged, they are in a safe environment. It is the size school that allows me to know the parents, and I know all the kids, whether I teach them or not, lets me fuss at them in the halls, even if I don't know them. And it's a wonderful environment. As a teacher, we feel like there is immense potential at this school. And I am primarily a high school teacher, and I am really looking forward to being instrumental in developing a vibrant, working high school that challenges students and produces citizens that this town can be very, very proud of. And I feel that the school has the potential to do that. So I'm anxious that you approve this, this bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Camille New, and I am a teacher at Triangle Math and Science Academy. I am a recent graduate of NC State, and I'm here to support Triangle Math and Science Academy, not only because I think it's a great school, but because it offers a really great set of jobs for new graduates coming out of the education programs at NC State. And I'd love to see us offer more jobs as we expand to more of my fellow classmates who haven't graduated yet, and to keep the teachers here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Tina Hughes. I'm a software engineer. I've been a software engineer for over 25 years. I work for the state. I am the proud mom of two kids who go to the school, one in the seventh grade and one in the sixth. I want to tell you a little story of my daughter. Five years ago, she could not read. She's in the seventh grade. Both of my kids were diagnosed with speech-language difficulties. Of course, we brought in professionals. And I am proud to say, I want to keep it short, that this year at Christmas, I handed her a book on age level and said, "Go read." Usually, we have to sit down with her and badger her, and it's just havoc. She took the book, and lately, she said, "Ma, I'm on page like 150," by herself. That's amazing for my child. Of course, she's read before, but you have to be sitting there with her to hold her accountable. I've never seen my daughter read a book by herself. And I am very, very pleased, and I think that comes from the confidence that this school instills in the children, that no matter what your background is, no matter what your difficulties are, we expect you to be an achiever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Sarav Arunachalam, and I'm a research professor at the UNC Institute for the Environment at Chapel Hill. I'm here as a parent of two children in TMSA, one a sixth grader and another in kindergarten. And this is my first year at TMSA. I don't understand tax-exempt bonds. Okay? I've heard this about in the media, I've heard about the school. I'm an engineer by training. But I do understand one thing, what I heard from one of the earlier speakers, $7.2 million. Okay? If that's the amount of savings the school is going to get by the council approving this bond, I think it's a really big deal. There's a lot of wonderful things I can talk about TMSA and how my kids are benefiting. But I'll tell you one small example. My kids went to a base, Wake County Public School, I've been here about 15 years or so in Wake County. They went to a base public school, and my son, who's 11 today, is passionate about geography. So he wanted to participate in the National Geographic Bee, and I went to the school and said, "Would you please organize a local school bee, so he can move on to next stage?" And the principal wouldn't even consider the request. He said, "Oh, our staff are very busy, and we don't have the time to do this, and it's just, every extra thing we put on is too much of a challenge." And I said, "I will do everything I need to do for this, which is just filling out some forms, and I'll pay the fees that the board needs, and all you do is just put the name of the school on the form." And the school refused to do it, saying, "We are just too busy." But here is TMSA, and when they had a open house last year, I went to an open house and kind of saw what was going on on the weekend, on a Saturday. The halls were busy with existing students, and you heard one of the earlier speakers talk about robotics and geography and science and so on. There were kids sitting on weekends with their parents, a lot of parents involved, and they were all just having fun. It was like a party at the school. I was like, "Wow, what a fascinating environment on weekends, on Saturdays. You had the parents, you had the teachers, and the kids all having fun at school on a Saturday." Okay? I don't see that at too many schools. And that gave me some very positive impression about the school, and then I decided to put my two kids. I applied, and I got in the lottery, one of them got in, both got in. Now I'm very happy. So the lot of other positive I can talk about, I can go on and on. Besides promoting academic excellence, I think the school does a lot of extracurricular activities. They have 30 to 40 different clubs running on evenings and weekends. Then another, I think, very appealing thing I saw was, on the evenings, after the school is done, some teachers stay back to tutor the kids. I thought, "Wow, the teachers staying back to tutor the kids for free?" So if somebody is being left behind in the class for whatever reason, the teacher's there to help them. And then the amount of clubs they have, there are so many different things. My kids are super busy. I don't have to go and look for any other activity outside, because school keeps them plenty busy. I love the school. I appeal to you all to pass the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Fred Garland, and I have three sons that attend Triangle Math and Science Academy. As one of our parents was saying, they wanted to tell you a little story. I'll tell you a little story about our coming from Chicago, coming here to North Carolina. We attended one of the schools, local schools here, elementary schools. Wasn't excited about it. They weren't very friendly. We were very, very disenchanted about the schools here in Cary and considered leaving the area. Happened to come to one of the meetings when Triangle Math and Science Academy started, and the president and I had a great conversation. My wife and I got renewed excitement about what we were going to do here in North Carolina. The school is very, very friendly. They actually invite you to come down and give your ideas, and that's very refreshing, considering most of the schools, you don't have the opportunity to do that. Their curriculums are usually set in stone, and if you're trying to make any changes, they are very, very apprehensive about doing that. But at math, at Triangle Math and Science Academy, they're very, very open to hear what the parents have to say. They're very, very active in all of the academics, from, we say, the clubs that they provide. They, at one time, were providing Saturday schools, where they were doing tutoring, and the tutoring was, was free. It was no charge. And that just shows you the level of commitment that the school has towards the children. And I'm so excited about being here. My wife, my kids, they get up in the morning, they're excited about learning, and it's just a joy to be here. And please, consider this bond, and I think it would be one of the best things that you have ever done for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much, first of all, for this opportunity. My name is Rejaya Ersoy. I have a son, 11 years old, at sixth grade. He has ADD, and he has graduated from Farmington Woods. And actually, we are very happy to participate in the school program and to support from the teachers, from the school. And really, $7.2 million is a really big money. I'm working for, for business, and I know what does it mean. And it will be very helpful for our kids. I don't care the rest of the things, but for the kids, for our future, it's really very important. And I would be very happy if you approve it. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else at this public hearing? Anyone else at all? Closing the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
I think it was very reassuring to have the speaker give us information, I'm sorry, Mr. Millier, I think is his name, give us information about the prevalence of these bonds that are being issued, and also the lack of responsibility that the town takes on. Because I think that was our big concern, is that we would be taking on some kind of responsibility for the success of this school with those bonds. And I think, at least for me, he, he has certainly allayed my concerns. I understand that the city of Raleigh has done this recently for St. David's, so we do see a precedence of it occurring elsewhere in our region, and I feel very comfortable moving forward. I'm very impressed by this school, and I, I would like them to be able to take advantage of this opportunity.
Okay. Other comments?
I'd like to ask the applicant to come back down and explain, because we did receive some emails, about why this didn't go to Wake County instead, because I know people who might not have heard, on December 11th, when we discussed this, I know we received a couple of emails, so if you don't mind.
You want Mr. Barron or Mr. Millier?
Mr. Barron is making his way.
Okay.
I was going to let him.
Thank you, Jason Barron, once again, on behalf of the applicant. Councilor Bush, to answer your question, and I believe we were caught up in pre-election politics, and there's no other way to describe it. We had attempted, and just for you all's edification, and I explained this to Councilor Robinson when we talked about it late in the fall, when it came to you all's table. I had initially contacted the town when this, when this item became an item on behalf of the school. I represented the school through the special use permit process and handled, and our firm is working with them on the real estate side of this as well. When it became clear that local government involvement was going to be necessary, my first response was, "Well, we need to go to the town of Cary." The town has already seen, the school has already approved a special use permit. This was shortly after, this was in May, so it was two months after Wake County Public Schools had placed caps for the first time on schools in the 55 corridor, so I understood there was sensitivity to it. My gut reaction was, "Take it to the county," or, excuse me, "Take it to the town." In consultation with the town's attorney, as well as the town manager's office, there was some hesitation about taking it to you all first. And so we explored taking it to the county. We made contacts with the Board of Commissioners, who were elected at that time. We felt like we had good support, and then really, at the 11th hour, we were expecting to get a hearing in October. And in the, at the 11th hour, we couldn't pull together the necessary people in order to place it on the agenda. At which point, I actually contacted Councilor Robinson to see if she could help at all with assisting at that process at the county level, and that's how it is, it is at you all's table. So we attempted to get it through at the county level, and unfortunately, we just couldn't get the political support from the county, and for reasons that really weren't described to me, related to the merits of the proposal, it appeared to me more unfortunate politics leading up to an election.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments or a motion? Mr. Yerha?
Originally, when I first heard this and heard there was some concern a month ago, whenever that was, I really thought it was kind of much ado about nothing, that this was really just a simple formality and, and not really a concern. Then we referred it to staff. I was hoping, or thinking, that maybe we'd get the staff report back, which would confirm that suspicion of mine, that this was really much ado about nothing. And the fact that I'm not an expert in this, I don't think any of us are, it's the first time we've dealt with this, and I truly appreciate Mr. Millier's explanation and tutorial on tax-free bonds. It's wonderful, wonderful information. But since we're not an expert, I rely more on the staff report, who I consider more expert than, than us on this matter. And I didn't get that feeling that we're okay from a liability standpoint. And I have up here, it's the fiscal impact section of the staff report. And if you may, it's just a couple sentences, I'll read it. "There appears to be no contractual risk resulting from the approval of the bonds." That's good. "However, if the school fails financially or in performance, and therefore loses its charter from the state and its resulting revenue streams, the borrower could default on its bonds. There is a concern, although remote, that a bondholder could name the town as a party in a suit to recover their investment. While the staff is confident that the town would not be found liable, the cost to defend the town and educate our citizenry on the complex transaction would be a responsibility of the town." And it gives me a concern. Instead of finding it simple, the word "complex" is used here. And unless someone tells me this is, you know, incorrect, or has, has been superseded by some new information, the indemnification or whatnot, I'm, I'm just having trouble supporting this, and I just, I just don't feel comfortable with it. Mr. Barron mentioned before about the, you know, once we get over the uniqueness of the situation, I guess I haven't gotten over that uniqueness of the situation. I certainly applaud the school for the progress they've made and the work they're doing and the sincere testimonies of the parents. It's, it's great. But I can't get over the, I guess, the uniqueness and the potential liability on the part of the town. So I'm going to probably vote in opposition to the resolution.
I would, I would just say, in answer to that, you know, just kind of my perspective, the words that I focused on were different from the ones that you focused on. I mean, in particular, for the concern to be remote, I think it's, I think it is not likely that this would, would occur. We have certainly taken on costs to defend the town in various lawsuits, and I can't think of many that I would say would be as worthy as supporting an excellent institution, educational institution for our citizens that clearly is providing just an incredible and superior form for education. I mean, I think, listening to these parents, any other parent would say, "Man, I want my kid to be part of that. This is amazing." And, you know, as a parent who has children in a private school and who pays for her children to attend school, I can tell you that fundraising is very challenging. $7.2 million is a huge amount of money for that institution to have to raise. And it could actually, by, by not doing this, while they'll continue operating, it may thwart their vision of being able to expand into the high school grades in the timeline that they would like. And I just, to me, I think it's worth the chance in this case. I don't think, because I think it is remote. If I thought that it was a high likelihood, I would not pursue it. But I think that the chance is extraordinarily remote, and I don't think that we are asked to do, we're being asked to take on financial responsibility that the town of Cary cannot handle.
Mr. Smith? Actually, I think Pointe are well on. What I thought I heard during the presentation is that if there's more to do to allay the fears of that full, what do you call it, indemnity? I don't think we should give up on that, just to allay those concerns about, as, as remote as they are. So whatever, you know, this is decided to move forward. I'd like to see something that says that we continue to work with them to try to beef that up a little bit, because, you know, the reality is, you know, I kind of go both ways here, but I do agree that we've been victims of tried and true decisions at the courts that now have become evolving decisions, and that the, the courts are no longer predictable. And frankly, I think they're becoming politicized. And when you get into this evolving decisions, where towns have lived for years with tried and true cases regarding zonings and whatever, and now we're, now we're held, basically we're punished. That's the only reason I think Mr. Yerha brings up a good point. So I'm very sour on some of the legal decisions. I'm sour on a lot of that, and I worry about this getting caught up in that, just because things like that go forward. But I do agree that there's just a lot of merit there, and I just, I'm just appealing to us and our zeal to want to support the resolution. You know, a lot of the conversation and tone is, is if we're approving this, we have nothing to do with, we're just providing a resolution of support. And I'm okay with that, as long as, you know, we have some pledge of some follow-up in our, with our legal folks to try to beef that up a little bit. try to beef that up a little bit. So, I mean, that's my only thought.
Other comments?
Yeah, I put my, even though she's not here, I'll put my Gail Adcock process and consistency hat on. First off, I am definitely impressed with what I heard today. I don't have a kid that's in the school, but after hearing all these parents, too bad, mine's in college already, I would send, I would, you know, turn around and send them. Yeah, I'd bring her back and let her go in. I am impressed, I'm impressed with the school administrators, the parents, the children, and, you know, obviously impressed with the people that have come up and spoke. My comments are not in any way to diminish everything positive and the tremendous success that I've heard, but I do have some questions, concerns about the process, which is what I think staff brought up in the beginning, and it's specifically why I asked Mr. Barron to come up and speak to it. For all intents and purposes, I'm afraid we're setting a precedent that now educational entities can come to counsel for this type of activity, when I really believe that this public hearing and everything that went along with this should have been, gone to the Wake County Commissioners and the school board. The school board can hold a public hearing, but then the Wake County Commissioners could be doing what we're doing with a resolution. I think it's very disappointing that the commissioners didn't take, you know, this activity on their behalf, because I think that's where it belongs. And I agree, this is not necessarily a referendum on charter schools, but this whole process thing, we've setting a precedent, I think we're potentially crossing a line when we say we can't do anything because of our state statutes, we can't do anything with schools, but then we support or deny tax-exempt mon, I just think we crossed the line, and if I were to do this, I would, if we could do it over, I'd say, let's call Wake County, because I think that's really where this belongs. I just don't think it belongs here, I think we're setting up a precedent. Whether or not I believe that this is a fantastical school, I do, but the next one that comes, I don't want to have another one and another one come in, and that's what I'm concerned about here.
And what you could have is nonprofit after nonprofit, because what we heard is that this is not unique to charter schools, that this is a device that could be employed by any kind of nonprofit.
True, and I don't know if we want, I don't know that we even want to do that, if a church were coming here and asking us for that, or, I mean, any 501(c)(3), and I don't know if, I believe that that's, this is the place for that.
And I think that the time to do that, make that decision, is the call for the public hearing, vote against it at that time, and you would never get to this point.
Possibly.
So that's the opportunity you have in the future.
Yeah, possibly, and I think what Gail said and I agreed with was, everybody deserves an opportunity to be heard, right? That's, I believe, what she said, and what I said is, yeah, let them have the public hearing, but that's my concern, that was my concern then, and that's my concern now.
Ms. Frank.
I appreciate hearing the comments from everybody, it's helpful. I think one of my biggest frustrations, and probably all our biggest frustrations on this council, has been education in Cary, and that so often our hands are tied and we can't do anything about it, because that's the responsibility of Wake County and public school system. But every time we've, in the past, that we've had an opportunity to help schools or the school system, we've done it, whether it's been with infrastructure improvements, roads, waivers, athletic facilities, partnerships, or just flat-out cash money, we've done it. I look at this as pretty much a no-cost, incredibly low-risk opportunity to provide for more educational opportunities in the town of Cary. You know, as we've heard, this will save Triangle Math and Science 7.2 million dollars over 30 years. And that's 7.2 million dollars, or $240,000 a year that they can actually spend on education instead of just interest payments or loan payments. I mean, to me, that is huge. I mean, our acceptance or approval of this resolution basically provides for $240,000 of education in the town of Cary at a school. I hear you on process, and, you know, maybe it should have gone to the county, but they tried to take it to the county, and unfortunately, politics, as it oftentimes does, rule the day. You know, there's a left-right divide on charter schools, make no bones about it. It's oftentimes a hot button with certain segments of the population. The school system not wanting to do anything about this doesn't strike me as odd in the least little bit, because schools, the Wake County Public Schools has never liked charter schools. They don't have control over charter schools, that's the problem. The county didn't want to take it up because they didn't want one more political football before an election that they ultimately lost anyways. So hindsight, they probably could have taken it up, and probably would have taken it up if they knew what they knew now. But as we've also heard, the city of Raleigh has also done this with, help me, St. Davids, thank you. So I don't know that necessarily we're the ones setting the precedent, when it seems to me that maybe Raleigh has already done that. Sorry? Oh.
No, he's asking a question about St. Davids.
So to me, with, you know, indemnification from the school that does not hold the town liable, I guess my question would be, is there anything in this indemnification agreement that we still have concerns about? I mean, it's, you know, you've got weird words in here, and, you know, whether it could happen, or whatever, but, I mean, is the language in here still a concern, or do we feel like we're pretty good?
We were comfortable with the indemnification language, but if council wants us to, we can certainly work with the applicant.
So you're comfortable with this?
Yes.
Was the staff report prepared before you got this, or after you got this?
I believe the indemnification offer came after the initial preparation of the report.
Okay, so since we've gotten the staff report that uses the words like "concern," although remote, we've now gotten this.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
So are we, do we still have a remote concern, or we pretty much have no concern?
I guess to the extent there was a concern, something could be brought, that's still there, but we do have their promise to indemnify the town and save us harmless in the event that happens.
Okay, so, zero to 10 scale, risk is a .1? I mean...
I think it's minimal. I think it gets back to what Jack Smith said, but we can be challenged on anything.
Yeah, I mean, we get sued all the time, and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on stupid stuff.
Yeah.
At least if we got sued or something on this one, we're at least spending some money on education, which is actually important.
I think the question asked, Ms. Simpson, from me, is, is there anything else we can do to protect ourselves better?
I'm not aware of anything right now. With the indemnification, perhaps you could get, it's the parent organization that's providing the indemnity, you might ask that the local organization be included on it, that's what's occurring to me now, but the language is pretty broad, and it promises, they promise to indemnify you from all loss, costs, and liabilities. That's if you adopt the resolution.
Okay, so, hearing that, I don't know that the concern is still there, that we do have a financial risk. And at the end of the day, if there is a slight risk, to me, providing for education is at least something to take a risk for. And I think, for those reasons, I fully support this. I was kind of shocked when it came to us the first go-around, and then there was concern, although, knowing what I know now, I could understand the concern, but, I mean, we've spent millions of dollars in this town over the years on educational items. I just don't see this as that big a concern, I really don't. I wholeheartedly, and I greatly appreciate the folks that came here tonight, I actually spent quite a bit of time on, you know, Google and Triangle Math and Science's website and stuff, and I was thoroughly impressed with most of what I found. I too would, you know, if I still, I've got six kids, and if they were still in school, I'd probably be applying to this one. Really cool stuff, keep doing what y'all are doing. Also, really, really took note of the diversity of the school, student population, and is represented in the speakers that came here tonight, I think that was pretty powerful. They're doing great things, keep it up. For those reasons, I would make a motion that we approve the resolution recommending the approval of tax-exempt bonds for the financing of Triangle Math and Science Academy.
A second then?
There's a motion and a second discussion, further discussion.
The only further discussion would be, the applicant offered to see if there was any other wordsmithing that could be put in for the full indemnity, and I would argue that we can go forward with this, obviously, and, but that we should take in good faith, you know, I guess maybe the hammer to come to the table to look for more may be gone, but I still would like to take the applicant up on that willingness to meet with our attorney to see if they can strengthen it. Doesn't have to diminish what we're voting on tonight, but I just think it would be a sign of good faith.
From what I heard from our attorney, the only thing that we could add is ask that the local entity do, adopt the, gosh, I can't say it.
Yeah, I know, it's a tough word.
Indemnification as well. Mr. Barron, would you speak to that?
We're happy to add the school as an indemnitor also.
Okay. Do we need to amend our motion to include that, or is that public record enough?
I would accept the offer of indemnification by both of the entities, I think that would make sure it was covered. Amend the motion to add the...
Ms. Frank?
I amend my motion.
I second my...
Great.
Motion is amended.
Thank you.
Good. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two. Thank you to everyone who showed up this evening, and for your comments, and for your patience as we deliberate. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is item 6.1, renewal of naming rights agreement at Wake Med Soccer Park. I'm talking very slow, hoping it'll calm down a little bit. Mr. McRaney of the staff will present this item, and then council may take action. Mr. McRaney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this staff report is to consider the approval of an offer of sponsorship for Wake Med, from Wake Med, for $315,000 per year for a three-year period. Total value of this naming rights agreement is $945,000. We have been in contract with Wake Med, under such naming rights since 2008, and essentially have renewed that contract every three years, and here we are again. As a reminder, the revenue from the naming rights agreement is shared 50/50 with the rail hawks, as with past contracts, and the one major change with this particular agreement is that it will attach only to the park and not to the 10,000-seat stadium. Wake Med agreed to exclude the stadium from being part of the renewed agreement, which allows the town to pursue naming rights sponsor from the stadium in addition to, and separate from that of the park. And so consequently, two recommendations we're seeking, that you would approve the Wake Med's offer of a sponsorship for the soccer park, and in addition, that you would authorize the town manager to enter into a Wake Med park naming agreement for a three-year term of 315,000 per year for a total of 945,000, and I will answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments, or motion?
Our only comments would be to thank Mr. McRaney and all your staff for all their hard work on this, and I like it.
Thank you.
Couldn't say that better, I was gonna say the exact same thing. I like it when one of our public entities is making revenue for the town to help pay for the great public service that we offer, that this park offers to everyone. I guess I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation to approve their offer of sponsorship of the soccer park, excluding the stadium for three years at 315,000 per year.
There's the motion.
Second.
And the second, discussion?
Well, I'll just say, I take a little bit of a different approach from Ms. Bush. I don't love the selling of naming rights, I kind of feel like it's selling out the soul of our community. Some could argue that Wake Med is part of the soul of that community, so, you can see it both ways, but I'll support this, because we, this has been something, it's been a sponsorship that we've had for many years, this is a continuation, this is not something new, I would not be as enthusiastic about selling the naming rights for another entity, but I'll support this one.
Okay.
I completely agree with Mrs. Robinson, I'm not a big naming rights person myself, but I have no objection to this particular issue.
I love naming rights, it provides revenue that we otherwise wouldn't get to pay for all this cool stuff.
Yeah, look, it's a necessary evil.
Yes.
It really is. I mean, but just think, the past season, watching the bowl games, where years ago, you had very traditional games, you had the Liberty Bowl, the Blue Bonnet Bowl, you know, you had all of these things that, you know, you could relate to. Now it's the underwear bowl, it's the Go Daddy this, this, and that. You know, you don't even know what city they're in, you don't know what's going on, and it really is a loss.
It's so sad.
There really is a loss here, you know, and every year you get a new bidder. I think, at least at our level, we have the ability to manage some of that with some of our local folks. I really don't like naming rights, but I think as long as we can apply, I don't even know what the right word is, a level of dignity to it with some of these companies, I think that's great, it shows a partnership, so, I agree with it, but in principle, I gotta tell you, naming rights are a bummer sometimes.
Wow, Mr. McRaney, there's a warning, three councilmen have already said they don't like naming.
No underwear bowl, no Russell Athletic, or, you know, Under Armour Bowl, or anything like that.
But you pay the bills so that ballgame gets to happen, right?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McRaney. We now move to item 6.2, sidewalk and related roadway improvements bid award. Ms. Cove will present the item, council may take action. Ms. Cove.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item, as the mayor mentioned, for your consideration tonight, is the bid award for several sidewalks, as well as a portion of one of our transportation bond projects. As you know, in accordance with your sidewalk priority request policy, we annually bring you a list of ranked sidewalk projects that we anticipate being able to fund with the existing annual budget. Following your approval of this list, we start the design process, and then when we get to construction, we try to package those sidewalks with the ones that are ready, to get the ones that are ready for bid out to bid as soon as possible. So for this construction bid, we have a combination of six sidewalks from both the 2012 and the 2013 ranked project list. In addition, we try to package some similar-type work together in construction projects, so for this construction bid, we receive bids for one intersection out of one of our transportation projects, and it's the Cary Parkway intersection. So staff recommends that council award the base bid sidewalks, and also recommends award of the alternative bid number one, which is that intersection improvements at southeast Cary Parkway, near the US-1 interchange. And with regard to the third staff recommendation, the construction costs are now higher than we anticipated when we developed those initial estimates in 2011, 12, and 13. It's obviously good news for the economy, but it's put us in a position where we're not able to recommend the lowest-ranked sidewalk project, so we are not recommending moving forward with bid alternative number two. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments, or motion?
Just, well, maybe a question or a comment. I actually spoke with a council member in Morrisville today, and talked about the McCrimmon Parkway, and, you know, their desired participation, and some of the things they would want to see, and I kind of got the impression that they still didn't just have enough time to talk about it and commit to a, you know, a funding number, or a level of participation. I would just hope that we continue to work with Morrisville on this, and see what, you know, both sides might be able to come up with, and maybe have this back on the list for next year or something.
We could do that, or if council directed us, we could go back and work with them now for a certain amount of money that you would want to seek in that partnership, and...
Well, actually, I think I know who you're talking about, on the Morrisville Council, and I would love to see this go to the joint Cary-Morrisville group that I'm now a part of. I'm giving myself work.
I talked with the mayor.
Oh, well, you win.
And explained to him, there were several things that happened here. One, we had plugged this in when there was available money.
Correct.
The available money evaporated, it went away. Its criteria did not move it up to the buildable.
That's correct.
The criteria will be evaluated. Their participation, I don't think, impacts the criteria, so we have to...
It does not.
If we want that to be a part of our criteria, then we might want to consider changing it. it. Another good news is the land where we're talking about is for sale, and if somebody builds, they have to build the sidewalk, and then.
And there's no carbon gutter there, and so, yeah, it would be more expensive. It would be temporary.
But my last comment to him was, we're not going to let this drop. We'll continue to bring it up and we'll continue to discuss it.
Maybe in the joint task force.
There you go.
Cool.
So, other comments, motion?
I make a motion that we approve the list that's been documented for this year.
Okay.
A second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So if I could just clarify, you're approving the staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
We now move to item 6.3, the 2015 legislative agenda. Ms. High will present the item, and council may take action. Ms. High.
Good evening. We've received a request for annexation from the homeowners in Hollybrook subdivision. Most of the owners in this subdivision have been receiving sewer service from the town since the mid-1990s as a result of the failure of their original onsite system. Staff has evaluated the area and determined that services could be provided. However, these properties do not meet the current state mandated criteria for annexation. Therefore, staff recommends that you amend your 2015 North Carolina legislative agenda by adding a request for a local bill to annex the Hollybrook subdivision. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion. I think this is a great collaborative effort. I make a motion that we amend our 2015 North Carolina legislative agenda to include the request for legislative annexation, I guess it's authority, is that how you say it?
Just legislative annexation.
Okay, legislative annexation of Hollybrook subdivision.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second. In discussion, we're meeting with the legislator, our delegation, next week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. I knew it was coming up. And so we'll be talking about this at that time.
Yes.
Perfect. Other discussion? Okay, all in favor of this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. High.
Thank you.
Move to item 6.4, a request for High House Road South. Staff will give a report. We're going to hear from the planning board on their recommendation, and council may take action. This item requires a single majority. Ms. Grant.
Thank you for your consideration. It's a request to rezone approximately 16.4 acres located at 2421 High House Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow on the south side of High House Road. And an aerial view shows the property has a single-family residential home on it. This is the Balcom home. Land use plan designation is low-density residential. This was a recent amendment to remove the overlay district for an activity center and to change the designation from medium to low-density residential. The existing zoning is residential 40, still has the activity center overlay on it, so the request is to rezone to remove that and to zone the property R8 conditional use. Since this was initially presented to you back in May of 2014, the rezoning request has changed. It's no longer the transitional residential, it's now R8 conditional use. So the transitional residential would have allowed a 5,000-square-foot lot, R8 allows an 8,000-square-foot lot. There are additional zoning conditions, which the applicant spoke to during public speaks out. Current maximum number of dwelling units, 30, which would equate to 1.8 dwelling units per acre. The applicant's also offered to provide a perimeter buffer, a 30-foot undisturbed perimeter buffer, and to require a larger lot size of 11,000 square feet adjacent to that buffer. And there was also a zoning condition offered to preserve the Balcom house in its current location. Initially, there was discussion about saving it in the general vicinity, and now they're talking about keeping it in the exact location where it is currently. So the planning and zoning board recommended this for approval by a vote of six to two. At this time, I'd like to ask the planning board chair to speak to their discussion, and then I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Swannstrom.
Mr. Mayor, Council. First of all, I'm going to ask you to excuse my voice, I'm getting over a cold, and, you know, when I have a cold, it is followed up by laryngitis, it's just a rule. So we had a fairly extensive conversation on this one, and most of it was focused on traffic. This is a high-traffic area, as you all know, and we had some specific concerns about access and egress, whether we would, by some of the stipulations and the traffic conditions, be forcing a U-turn for some residents on High House Road. Therefore, you know, anytime you have a U-turn, it mitigates already a difficult traffic situation. We had some questions about the pedestrian access as well. We, at the time, were concerned about buffering to the Balcom home, so we preserved the historical context for that facility, and we believe that that was addressed by the requirements for an historical easement. So I think we determined that that wasn't going to be an issue, and we did feel that the request was consistent with adjacent neighborhoods.
Well, I guess I have a question. Tell me why the two people who voted against it voted against it?
Traffic.
Okay.
Specifically in that area, as I'm sure we all are well aware, traffic is a continuing issue. And there, at the time, was maybe a little bit of confusion about how the access and egress was going to work, and that U-turn question, at least in one of our board members' minds, was still an open question. But I think in general, it's traffic.
In asking and hearing that answer, I actually have a question for staff on traffic. I think the road's at its ultimate width, I was wondering what other improvements are coming?
Or what other improvements?
Are there any?
No, there are, and they're desired, but where do we find the money for them?
Right, right.
You're speaking about the.
The realignment.
Realignment oversee the railroad.
That's right.
Carpenter Jinks, is that, was that Jinks?
Jinks Carpenter.
Sorry. Jinks Carpenter, Carpenter Jinks.
Ditto, is that what?
Good evening, yes, yeah, there was a project many years ago that had Carpenter Church going over the railroad to connect up opposite Carpenter Church Road, but that was somewhat defunded as the economy.
Tanked.
Changed, so. That's still, it's still a candidate project, which is annually reviewed by council as part of the budget, annual budget.
So there, to simplify, there is a future project that would help mitigate some of the traffic concerns that's not funded, or even considered.
That is correct.
Dollar project.
Right.
I will tell you, the only project that I am aware that's committed is the, is part of the 87th High School that's being built on Roberts Road. They've agreed to provide a right-turn lane on High House Road as you go to approach NC-55.
A right-turn lane on the eastbound?
It would be going westbound.
Westbound traffic.
Yes, and that's really a high movement.
Is that like in front of the dollar store?
Yes.
Other questions, comments? Okay. We ready for a motion?
Are we all done with all the?
Just to comment, let me say, I'm especially, if, are we, we're ready for comments, right?
Yes, please.
Just want to say, I'm especially pleased about the condition for the house. I got to say that. Would have thought I was sick if I.
Shocking.
To keep it in its present location with a preservation easement is a wonderful thing, with land around it, to keep it in its context. So I really want to thank the applicant representative, the staff, and Capitol Area Preservation for working to get that, you know, make that happen. Actually, I think all of the new conditions are all in the positive direction.
I just have a question about, and maybe Ed's the one to ask, but is the home going to be part of the new development and sold to a potential future resident, or is that home maintained by?
I'll have to ask the applicant to speak to that. I don't believe it addresses that as part of the preservation easement.
Just notice Capitol Area Preservation, just hang on to it?
Yes. The intention is that the current landowner would not be selling the home to a future developer. The home would be gifted to Capitol Area Preservation, who in turn would have the easement on it, and they in turn sell it to a resident that would buy it under certain conditions and continue to operate as a home.
Okay. Just looking at the home, I just can't help but think that would be the one house there I'd want to buy.
And it's fully operational, it's a great property.
Okay, I was just curious what.
Now you know who to call without it. Get in line first.
There's a Realtor over here.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'll just say, for those who are watching and concerned about the schools, this is a source of great consternation for me as I look at this one, because we have been looking critically at every rezoning request through the lens of do we have school capacity? And just in the last week, we heard that Davis Drive Middle School might be capped, which obviously this school attends. So it's very difficult, and, you know, I've looked at this and thought about this very hard, and from the very beginning, as we talked about school capacity, what we were saying is that this is not a black-and-white issue, this is not like a no to everything. This is, we will evaluate every case on a case-by-case basis, and if we think that it makes a very compelling case for approval, that supersedes the concern we have over the school, or maybe matches or addresses in some way, then we would feel compelled to vote for it. And if it does not make a compelling case, then we can either recommend that the applicant wait for a while longer until we figure out the school situation, or we can deny it. In this situation, and I could go back to the conditions that are put on it, you know, it's 1.8 units per acre, which is so incredibly low. I mean, it's, it does not mean you'll get 20,000-square-foot lots, but definitely a very low density. To have only 30 dwelling units added for this area, I find that to be pretty impressive in an area that's clearly in infill development. So often, when we have an infill development, we have a really hard time getting the density down like this because the land has become so valuable, and the applicant makes the case that he has to have a higher density because of the cost of land. So this is a situation where I'll be voting for this, but it is not one of those free, like, woo-hoo, let's go, let's vote for this. It's with some concern, and, you know, we're doing the best that we can here in trying to weigh the responsibility we have as far as adding densities and not overburdening our schools, so.
And I tend to agree with your comments, and I'll carry it a little bit further. I think, after thinking about the current issues, how it's going to play out down the road, when schools are addressed, when the road issues are addressed, and we're talking a long time, what is the wait for great? Is this it? And I think it's pretty close with the densities and the size of the lots. I don't think you can get much better. And I think if you do wait 10, 15 years, what you'll get is more pressure to have more density, and this will be smaller lots, and it'll get back to practically what it was before, so I tend to agree with you. Other comments?
To me, I just don't think we're going to get a better deal. You know, like you say, yeah, you can wait. Reality is, is a school issue ever going to get fixed? No. I mean, we're a desirable place to live. People want to move here, and there's a reason why, and we don't want to tell people you can't. So we're going to constantly have new people moving in and growth, and pressure on school system and infrastructure and so on. But when you get a project that commits to no more than 30 units, 1.8 per acre, I mean, when, if you waited five years from, or whatever, from now with a different council, different circumstances, you could get four units an acre. So I just, I think this is the best deal we're carrying, that we're going to get on this piece of property, and I'm going to support it.
Other comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve 14 REZ-05 High House Road South.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Would you like to do the comprehensive?
Why not? I'll make a motion that we approve the comprehensive plan consistently statement for the rezoning of 14 REZ-05 High House Road South.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
You're welcome.
We now move to item 6.6. The rezoning request for Indian Wells property, staff will give a report. We're going to hear from the planning board's recommendation. Council may take action. This will require a single majority of vote to approve, and once again, Ms. Grant will introduce this item.
Thank you. This is to amend zoning conditions associated with a previously approved rezoning case located on Indian Wells, the subject property highlighted here in yellow. Land use plan designation is not changed from the medium-density residential, and the existing zoning for both the subject property and the adjacent parcel is residential 8 conditional use. The applicant's previous rezoning case for this property, 13 REZ-23, provided a perimeter buffer along the entire western boundary of the subject property. And what is proposed before you tonight is to remove the buffer in this area only, adjacent to what was previously known as the Flint property. This property has since been rezoned, is now R8 conditional use. So both, both properties on either side of this existing buffer are residential 8 conditional use. R8 would not require a perimeter buffer between two properties like that. They're proposing to have it to be all part of the same development. The other thing that I wanted to point out is just a history of some of the recent rezoning cases in the general vicinity, and this helps to summarize what I was just explaining, that the Flint property was also rezoned R8 conditional use, and that the subject property was part of a 2013 rezoning case where it was rezoned to R8 conditional use as well. Planning and zoning board recommended this for approval by a vote of eight to zero, and at this time, I'd like to call on the planning and zoning board chair to present the request. The reason why it's come back up and was not a consent agenda item was because it had been tabled at the last town council meeting.
That's right.
Ms. Swannstrom, if you have voice left.
I'll give you what I have. Well, we voted unanimously to recommend approval. We did have a concern on the usual item, cumulative traffic impacts. The problem is, we have individual parcels being rezoned in this area, none of which are large enough to require a TIA, but if you take a look at the aggregate impact, it can be fairly significant in terms of traffic loading on already congested roads. That said, that, we thought that this was a very reasonable request. I mean, we're not really arguing about whether the zoning is correct on this parcel or the adjacent parcel, we're really just talking about a buffer between two parcels that have identical zoning, and so it seems as if by reasonableness, this should be a responsible request.
Thank you, Ms. Swannstrom. Any questions for Mr. Swannstrom? Yeah, I think that's important to reiterate, because we're talking about a buffer. These two are already approved, can already be built, and we're just talking about the buffer. My question is, the total acreage of the buffer, just curious.
I have the width, but I do not have the total acreage of the buffer.
Can you estimate, is it like an acre, or?
I don't want to guess, Seth, I'm sorry, I just.
Do you know how long the buffer is?
The applicants here, they could probably speak to that, sorry.
Yes. 10 acres. Believe the applicant's gathering information. Any other questions or concerns while that's going on?
So by decreasing the buffer, we're enabling them to get more lots, right? Or bigger lots?
Bigger lots is what I heard.
Because it's not very much, the buffer is not.
Of course, it's not a part of the zoning. So it's not a condition, but the comments made were that it would be for bigger lots.
No additional lots.
No additional lots. They have, they have a cap, refresh my memory, do they have a cap on how many lots?
They have a density cap, yes.
Density cap's different. That means they get two extra acres, they get eight extra units, or whatever.
That little buffer is not two acres.
Mr. Barron, please.
No, I don't know what is it.
If you have any information to offer, that would help us.
I don't have specifics, unfortunately. We're estimating it's roughly 400 feet long, and it's 20 feet wide. And again, from a lot count standpoint, the plans aren't before you. I've seen the plans. With or without the buffer, the unit count doesn't change, it just makes some of the lots more narrow, but it otherwise doesn't, it doesn't impact the overall development density.
So the lots get bigger if we remove this buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
I've never really been a big fan of, like, taking out a buffer. You know, it seems like, see, I'm really kind of surprised that they'd go through this much effort to remove the buffer.
If I could clarify, the parcel here adjacent to the buffer is part of the same development.
Okay.
It's all part of the same subdivision plan. So having the buffer here reduces the flexibility of the design.
Okay. So my only concern, and I expressed this to the applicant, was when this came in originally, the 13 REZ 23, I think, it wasn't required to have a TIA. And then when the second piece came in, because it was so small, it wasn't required to have a TIA, which I think gets back to Mr. Swanstrom and the planning and zoning board's considerations, where these came in piecemeal. Now that these two are being added together, it might have been likely that a TIA would be required. And again, putting in my equity hat on, all the rest of the developments that are in front of us had to participate in the traffic improvements. But this one doesn't. So if you were skeptical, you might think, oh, this is the way to do it at Cary. You just do multiple pieces, and you smash them together, you ask for the buffer, and you don't have to do any traffic improvements. And so, in one of the, in my meetings, I said, I'd like to see this applicant participate in the infrastructure improvements that all the other developers along this road have to make. Because basically, they bought two pieces, and they're going to shove them together. They can still develop their plan as is. It's just going to have a bigger buffer between two parts of the neighborhood. I don't know if Mr. Barron wants to speak to any, have there been any, anything offered by the applicant with respect to that?
We don't have any conditions specifically to offer on traffic improvements. Contact has been made with each of Standard Pacific Homes, as well as the other applicant, for the two zoning cases that are currently on ice in that area. There's the Wakina Road zoning case that's sitting on ice, and there's the Phillips property that Standard Pacific Homes has been working on that's sitting on ice. We've made contact, and I'm representing one of those applicants, so I can take that one off and put the other one on. Contact has been made in order to have that conversation at your encouragement. We don't have any conditions to speak of at this time. And as we mentioned to you, Councilor Bush, when we met, and I'll mention for the benefit of the entire council, Kehoe Nanyan Homes didn't handle the rezoning of either of these properties. They acquired the property after the two properties were rezoned. They didn't handle the entitlements. They didn't know how these pieces came together. They're an innocent purchaser, for lack of a better way to put it. And we don't believe that there was anything underhanded going on that preceded their activity in the case. But I just do want you all to understand that the people who are standing before you tonight to remove the buffer had nothing to do with how this property, from a zoning standpoint, came together in two pieces.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly appreciate your concerns. I really do. And it's something I think we definitely need to look at and continue to work on, and to keep getting that message out there that we don't like this kind of stuff. But at the same time, I do believe that this is, this one was not intentional. And I just feel that they could probably better develop the entire site more cohesively, connectivity or not, whatever, without that buffer. To me, that's what's before us tonight, the buffer, not traffic improvements, should they or shouldn't they, or any of that kind of stuff. But I really appreciate the comments and the concerns, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I guess the reason I brought it up is, I think it sets, again, that whole precedent, right? I don't like the fact that, you know, somebody goes off and buys the properties, and then says, oh, you know, you need to give me a waiver on my buffer because I want to put these together. Not granted, it'll certainly improve the look and feel of that community without that big buffer. I think people will drive by and go, why are all these trees right here, and they're not in this part of the neighborhood? They might. They might not just say, oh, look at the extra.
What was that, trees?
Oh, no trees. But I do think that message is important. I don't know if it's important enough for me to vote against it, but I really don't want to see it again. And I think a lot of, I think a lot of the developments have been coming in this way. And I think P&amp;Z was right to raise that as an issue, because we see it a lot. And in this case, I think you have to take them by a case-by-case basis. But I would like to see, I'm not putting, obviously, a condition, because I could never do that, on that developer. But I would like to see them be good citizens of Cary, especially as they bring more citizens in, and to participate in the infrastructure improvement.
Okay. This item is tabled, so if we want to move forward, first, we got to take it off the table, is my understanding. And then we can take action. Or we could do nothing, and it will remain on the table. So those are our options.
Make a motion to take it off the table.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's now off the table. How would we like to act on this issue? Let me make this statement. If there is a strong sense of rejecting approval of this change with the buffer, then the applicant would like to know that ahead of time, and would like to have it tabled again, so they can work on any issues that remain. So I'll just leave that out there as you think about the motion.
I make a motion to approve 14 REZ 24.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second discussion.
I think we've heard it all, but it's a like use, and I think the buffer gives them more flexibility in the development. So for this one, I would not have any heartburn.
Okay, very good. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Follow up with a motion to approve the comprehensive plan consistency statement for 14 REZ 24.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Look at me, I don't like those things.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Granton.
You're welcome.
We now move to items 6.8 and 6.9. Mr. France asks that this item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion, and staff is available for questions. Mr. France.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this one off the consent agenda was, I felt that the council, it would be good for council discussion on this particular item. Oftentimes, especially here in the last couple of years, we've really struggled with flipping or rezoning office property to residential. I mean, different council members have different concerns, and what one might think is a good idea, another might not. We've all voted for it at times and voted against it at times. So I kind of tend to take them, obviously, on a case-by-case basis. But this one gives me pause. You know, as we're all well aware, Weston is Cary, in my opinion at least, Cary's premier office area. We've had some wonderful projects come to that area and are continuing to come to that area. I just, I have heartburn removing this piece of office property from the Weston PDD and rezoning it to 325 apartment units. I get the whole discussion and justification of that live, work, and play thing, and we want to make sure that we have housing near our office developments, and retail and commercial near our office developments. But I just don't know that I'm willing to rezone this particular piece of property in the Weston area for residential. So that's my concern. That's it.
Other questions, comments?
Well, I'll just say, you know, this whole conversation makes me think back, probably seven or eight years ago, when we met with Highwoods. This wasn't even an idea that they had to bring this back. And they started talking about how the office complex is changing for the future, that it used to be the idea was that you go out and you build a bunch of office buildings in a campus, and then people drove to it. And now people want this interactive work, live, play experience. And that's changing the way Highwoods is looking at going forward with development of other, of brand-new projects. And we used that information that they gave us as we were shaping our Southwest, or, excuse me, our Chatham County plan. We were thinking about how were we going to infuse some non-residential in there. You know, you look at this, this whole area, I'm not a fan of switching office to residential at all. It has to be a compelling case. I think this makes the compelling case. I can't think of one vote that I've given recently that's been for moving office over to residential, but this is one that I think is appropriate. It's a good location, so I'll support it. I'd like to have some of the other votes taken back.
Other comments, questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion. Let me get the number. Oh, sorry.
14 REZ 22.
Oh, thank you. All right, I make a motion that we approve 14 REZ 22.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this one. I mean, concerns from removing this office property from the Weston PDD and allowing residential, I mean, obviously a concern. But, you know, some of the biggest concerns we've heard from our citizens over the last couple of years have been density and school capacity. And I just don't see how this helps in that regard.
And Ms. France, since you've called me up and told me you wanted to pull this, I've been thinking about this one a lot. And I, you know, it's a tough one either way, but I tend to agree with you, so I'm going to also vote against it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two. Now for the comprehensive plan consistency statement.
Who's got it? You want to do that?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion for the comprehensive plan consistency statement for rezoning 14 REZ 22, the Weston PDD.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nope.
Motion carries five to one. And now we are ready to go into closed session. I would entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to GS 143-318, 11A, 1, 3, and 5, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, among other things. The council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuit, Fifth Third Bank versus the Town of Cary. And two, to instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken by and/or on behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contracts or proposed contracts for acquisition of properties owned by Kenneth W. Maynard and Jean H. Maynard located at 2495 O'Kelly Church Road, and Patrick J. Gaglioni and Kathleen M. Gaglioni located at 2531 and 2533 O'Kelly Church Road. And three, to prevent the disclosure of information that's made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318-10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session. We'll reconvene our council meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.
I was just dumbfounded.
This has been a production of KIRI TV. Visit the Town of KIRI website at townofkirii.org.